Okay. Call the meeting of the Board of Education to order if the clerk could lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening everyone. And welcome. If I could have a motion that the agenda for today's meeting, February 9th, be approved?
So moved.
Motion in a second, all those in favor? Thank you. We have a consent agenda that you were previously emailed and delivered to your home that includes a number of things. If I could have a motion that the board approve the consent agenda for tonight? Any questions? Additions? All those in favor? Thank you. Attached is your treasurer's report, as you have seen, for the month ending December 31st, 2015. If I could have a motion in a second that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, general funds revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending December 31st, 2015, be approved?
So moved.
Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you. Well, we have a special report tonight and for our viewing audience, it's a nice occasion that we have with us the Monroe County School Boards Association Executive Director Sheri Johnson. Sheri, would you come forward and join us? And welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for giving me just a few minutes of your time. I don't know how much you've planned. I was, Dr. Putnam said, an hour, which gives you 55 minutes to do whatever you want to do.
We have all the time in the world.
That's awesome. So, as part of my entry plan, it was my goal to get to every single school district to your board table before the end of the year. I actually can't even believe it's February. I am just totally blown away by how quickly the time. I'm at 19, so not in counting the Churchill Child's School District, which was the board that I was on, I have two left. So, and so we'll just say we're saving the best for last. No, we won't. However, I will say I have a great team to work with, a superb set of board officers that I serve with, and it's not because one of them's sitting at your table tonight. So, basically, I had three goals. Not everybody can come and participate in all of our meetings, and this board is very good at being able to do that, and we're so appreciative for the time and dedication and the fact that you also allow us to use some of your very talented administrators in our work that we do in supporting all of you as you strive to provide quality education for the kids in your districts. So, I wanted to get out there for those people who didn't necessarily participate at the level that all of you do and just introduce myself and to say thank you for supporting our association. And I also want to say that to all of you who do come, we don't exist without you. We don't exist without your support, and my goal is to make sure that we're doing all the right things to give you all the kinds of information, advocacy, professional development that you need to do the work that, the very important work that you do for your communities. So that was basically my main reason. It has been the most fascinating educational experience for me, coming from one district, even though it was 18 years, and even though I was really involved with the Monroe County School Board Association, mostly with the Legislative Committee, served as an officer, this has been so worth the time and effort. It's just the work that I get to see you do at the tables, some of the, even though I've not stayed really long, just to see the difference, the way you're set up, the way you run. They're not huge, but they're enough that it was really, really a good experience. So my second reason for coming to you was to thank all of you for your support of me in this role. I am serious when I say I have some really wonderful people that I am able to work with that are mentoring me. The officers couldn't be more helpful and more useful as a resource as I move through this. And I love what I'm doing. This has just been, it's such an exciting experience for me to date, even with some of the pressures like the first legislative breakfast, the first trip to Albany, there will be the first trip at the end of February. I'm still, I wake up every morning and I'm anxious to get to work and to get to the work for, on behalf of all of you. So, I just wanted to share my appreciation for the opportunity to do this again, to serve all of you. So then, the third reason I've come today to speak to you is to, let me think, when, I'm sorry, I totally lost my train of thought here. I wanted to update you really quickly before I get to the third reason. There were a couple of things from the survey that I wanted to update you on, and that's why I lost my train of thought. We did two main things with the survey this year, and I think all of you are aware of it. In fact, you should have gotten the email about the possibility of joining a committee to study the possibility of having an alumni association. So, that was one of the reasons that I wanted to come out and just share that with you. 65% of the survey members who responded thought that that would be a good idea, so we're going to, the steering committee has given me the authority to put out an call to see who might want to be part of that. So, we did get a good response, but if you, we still are going to, I'm going to wait maybe till the end of the week, so if you are interested, let me know and we'll put that committee together. We'll put some, we've got like nine or 10 questions to answer and then maybe get back, and John's going to be on that, so he can help guide this with his experience on what that might look like. He's calling it an affiliation. We don't know what that name will be, it'll be a parallel thing. The other thing that I wanted to mention to you was that we are looking to, how do we capture our meetings, our information exchange and our labor relations so that folks that can't get to them, and I just was talking with Carol a bit, if you can't get to those meetings, how do we get those to you? In our school districts like Kendall, and if Holly should happen to join, how do we get those meetings so that you can actually not just get the minutes or not just get the presentation that somebody gave, but how do you actually get that give and take that goes on at those meetings? And we're going to experiment with something, I have not talked to the officers about this in detail, but I do have an idea of how that would work. And how do we share that out and how do we, you know, benefit those folks but not detract from making sure that we have anybody that wants to come to those meetings, come to those meetings? So that was, I'm sorry, that was the piece I was missing to talk to you about. So my third reason for coming to you is I would like to be able to come back and visit all of the boards of education only on a much longer timeframe and fewer of you. So I would like to do maybe six boards a year, six to seven boards, there's 21 of you, and maybe come back and sit for the meeting. And the reason I want to do that is, my charge for you is that I provide the professional development you want and the advocacy that you believe you need, but then I missed that piece of what I had before. What are you doing with regards to capital projects? I saw that on your agenda. What are you doing with regards to your budget? That's on your agenda. What are you doing with other aspects, curriculum and development? What are those kinds of things that I would be, what I would benefit seeing all of you work? So your boots on the ground, what is it that you're doing at your table so that I don't lose those pieces? So that's why I'm here to beg your permission to come back and visit.
Well, board members, any questions or comments for Sheri? And for our public out there, the Monroe County School Boards Association, Sheri mentioned is 21 school districts, about 158 or so school board members.
Yes.
From, obviously Kendall to, I don't know what.
Webster, maybe.
Webster, east and maybe growing after that.
Honeydew Falls is the longest I've traveled down so far.
Yeah, Honeydew Falls, and so it's a very active group. We have, all of the board members are active in it. Camille is a co-chair. Mark and Catherine on legislative, Carol on information exchange, Barb on labor relations, and on, obviously, a lot of committees as vice president of the organization, but I can say the diversity that we learn about other school districts, I think is very beneficial in our conversations with other board members. We are all different, but we're all the same, and we all have the same cause. And Sheri, for a number of years, was the assistant to the executive director and moved into this role in July, so we appreciate everything that goes on, and your coming, and if you do want to come back, we'll kind of put a ribbon across the chair in the front there to reserve you a seat.
That is, that's terrific. And I'm not putting any pressure on you. Rush Henrietta actually gave, there was a piece of paper sitting on my seat because they had a full house for other reasons, and it said reserved for Sheri Johnson, and I laminated it. So I, can I just bring it?
Perfect, perfect.
So I have that, I have that in my office, so, I really do, I really do appreciate it. And to be able to come back and actually sit and watch you in action will be great. Tonight, I just got done, I was telling a couple of folks, my son is moving back from Nashville, and so he's looking for a house anywhere. And so, obviously, I can tell him all the great school districts that are around, so they had put an offer on one in Webster, so I actually just came from Webster, traipsing through a yard and a house trying to let him understand what that is. So, it's been a busy, busy, busy time this year, but like I said, I wouldn't trade it for anything. It's been wonderful, so thanks to all of you.
Barb, question?
More a comment. I just wanted to say that I thought the transition went very smoothly, and I think that's both attributed to Jody and yourself having worked so well together and just picking up that.
Thank you.
Rod and moving forward.
And that's what I was, for me to be able to do this without dropping a ball or missing a beat has been one of my main goals. And Jody and I have very different personalities, but our hearts are right in the same spot, so the passion got carried over. So, thank you so very much.
Carol, Carol had a question?
Well, I just want to thank you for whatever you're going to do to try to capture the meetings. I don't think I've had one year where my schedule hasn't changed halfway through the year. So I meet all the board members, I attend in the fall, and then I disappear in the winter, so, anything you can do, because reading the minutes is not the same.
No, it's not.
It really is not the same. And what you mentioned, the discussion piece at the end really is very important, and you learn so much from it. So whatever you know you're able to do, I think that would be great.
Well, I think we have a plan, and I just want to, you know, bring it before the four officers and see if that will work, and I think we're actually going to try it at one of the meetings. We need to, you know, to work and make sure that the presenters are okay with us doing that. So, hopefully, we'll be able to do most all meetings, but occasionally there may be a meeting where that may not work. But if it, you know, if it doesn't, then you'll still have the background information, but to be able to have what I think I plan on doing shouldn't be expensive, because that's the big, the other big issue, is what's the budget that we have to be able to work with that in, which I'm still learning about, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, moving along on our agenda, we have visitor speaking time. Do we have anyone who has signed up? This is a time that residents can come and voice any concerns they have before the board, and there's always an opportunity to do that at any of our meetings, but we have none tonight. So now we'll look to Aubrey, our student representative, for her updates.
Hi. So currently, the entire district is in the middle of Blue Ribbon Week, and yesterday students came positive in pajamas. Today, they were happy in hats. Tomorrow is supportive in stripes. Thursday is trust in your team, and Friday is believe in blue. And then, I know at the high school, we have a speaker coming in this Friday to kind of promote the program, because all the proceeds that we're making are going to Life Fest Inside, which is a company or nonprofit that promotes kindness. And then, we've been selling these $3 wristbands that say kindness keeps the world afloat, and then these $3 wristbands go to the nonprofit, and it also, it gives students $1 off at Menchies and Starbucks a week, 10% off at Don's Original, and discounted Mark's pizzas. So that's, yeah, the other bracelet, so that's currently going on right now. And some exciting things are mock trial, won against Mercy last week, and they compete against McQuade tomorrow at Brighton High School at 6:00, and they're very excited about that because apparently that's their number one rival, and that's their biggest competition from last year. But they were able to beat them last year, but still. This Friday, students leave for the London, Paris and Rome trip at about noon, I think. And then, our new mascot should be coming in, like, end of this week or the week after break coming back, and accompanying that, we're going to do a coloring contest, like a blank mascot, and have that at the elementary schools to try to have everyone in it, and then also a name contest at the middle school and high school. And then for sports, over the weekend, Zach Brown and Frankie Gissandanner won the Class Double A Wrestling Sectional Championships, and that helped Penfield place second overall in the tournament. And Alpine Ski had sectionals at Swain today at 9:30 a.m. Hockey started at 7:00 versus Victor at Webster, and it's senior night here for girls varsity basketball at 7:45 versus Rush, and they're currently undefeated in section five.
Could you hold that bracelet up? Maybe we can get a little bit of a close-up on that bracelet somehow to get a view of that, because I think that's really a great thing to, and you could see that. So, thanks for letting us know about that, and that's really great. Any questions for Aubrey? All right, well, oh, you have a question?
It's just, I think, a clarification, is that our mascot will still be a Penfield Eagle, but it's the mascot costume that we're purchasing, correct? All right.
So it may be like blue in color, but it'll be an eagle, like the Blue Men Group or something, or really be a white, same color eagle too?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Depends on the coloring contest.
All right, good. Well, thank you for that clarification, and thank you, Aubrey, for sharing. Okay, now I'd like to move on to our superintendent reports. Dr. Putnam?
Yeah, so this evening, we have student and staff honors that I'll go through, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansucci for the 2016-17 capital budget proposal, as well as the scope and status update of 2016 capital project. So, mock trial, very exciting, and I get to go tomorrow night, I'll be there. The mock trial team congratulates the mock trial defense team for winning against Mercy's prosecution team in the first round of the competition. There are 18 PHS students on the mock trial team. The defense team includes Anna Givens, Tori Kogler, Josie Martin, Asma Mohammed, Kayla Ogden, and Rebecca Sublet, and the faculty advisor is Jenny Strong, and we actually bring in, in partnership, two legal coaches, Julia Zianca and Mary O'Connell. And I just want to, it's one of these great opportunities where mock trial is a relatively new club at the high school with, over the last three or four years, and it really came from students who were interested and finding wonderful Mrs. Strong, the teacher, English teacher, who stepped into the role of advisor, and every year that team gets bigger and bigger and bigger, and they're doing better and better and better, and I think it's great. So tomorrow night is the second round, I think at 6:00 p.m. at Brighton High School, and I'll be there to root on our mock trial team. The portfolio reception took place last week here at the high school. 12 PHS seniors showcased their artwork at the annual senior exhibit reception on February 3rd. I believe many board members, if not everybody, was able to get there, it was a large crowd. It's a great opportunity to see, and those pieces of artwork are still all in the offices here at the high school, the grade level offices and the main office. So if you get a chance, as you walk out of the building today, if you go out near the main entrance, you'll see all of the artwork. All of the student glass cases are filled with all the portfolio work, and just really showcases our talent here at the high school, which truly is a K-12 push. Talking to many parents that evening, what's amazing is in many schools and some places, you sort of become really good at one art area. I have no art skill, so I struggle through this, but, you know, it's either jewelry making or painting or sculpture, and if you take a look at the display cases, what we see in Penfield is really a dynamic overview of lots of different areas of art, which is really great. And I'm always amazed by it because I was forced to take creative crafts in high school, which got me my art credit, and I think I carved something out of balsa wood. So when I see this work, I'm just absolutely amazed because it's a talent I do not have. Speaking of a talent I do have, is a mac and cheese tasting contest, which kicked off Blue Ribbon Week. It took place this last Friday, and here's a picture of three students who actually made some macaroni and cheese. I believe we had eight or nine contestant entries, and it really, the point was spreading kindness with some comfort food. The donations went to the same not-for-profit that was mentioned earlier, and it was free to get in, but entries were $20, the people who brought mac and cheese, and it's really exciting because we have Dr. Sansucci, and I know that Lisa Benati Tidley is ill this evening, but they were the celebrity judges, and so I'll just mark it, who won? Do you remember who won, or which, what type of macaroni and cheese won? I'll put you on the spot.
No, they actually was, I don't know if celebrity judge seems absolutely wrong, doesn't it? But it was, it was a great event, and with nine, with nine entrants and the outpouring of support that the SEPTA received from the community, everyone won a prize, so everyone was a winner.
That's great. Good answer.
Everyone was a winner.
So we're looking to make that, and I know through SEPTA who organized, it looking to be hopefully something that we can do on an annual basis. Speaking of Blue Ribbon Week, we do have, this whole week is Blue Ribbon, and it really started from the Cool to Be Kind Club. It's a high school club, I think it's just a great example in our district in how we try to support grassroots efforts. So, student Jenna K., who is a senior this year, started the Cool to Be Kind Club a couple of years ago. Same idea, same concept with mock trial. It's a student who really wanted to start this club, and they brought it in and began. And so, this was last year, we had a sort of a Blue Ribbon Week, and it was smaller. And this year, it's a K-12 push, so you see some elementary school kids in their pajamas on Monday. Today was happy in hats, and lots of, lots of hats in all of the buildings. I would tell you to check out social media, both Twitter and our Facebook page, with lots of great pictures of Blue Ribbon Week. And it's really just about remembering kindness. And the age that we live in, sometimes it's forgotten, and one week doesn't solve it all, but it's a nice reminder that the district as a whole is working together, and a simple step to sort of remind students and staff and all of us that when we're kind, it can really go a long way. And so there is a speaker at Bay Trail as well, who's focusing on kindness around social media, and a speaker at the high school that's taking place, and really just a great event. So kudos to the clubs who worked on it, and all the administrators who put a lot of time in, and the students and staff. I think it's a lot of fun. The Penfield School District participated in Going Red for American Heart Association this past week, and you, just a couple of pictures, you see COBLO staff all in red there, and then district office as well, those who were able to get there, all dressed in red, and just a great cause again, and that was, throughout many of our buildings, we're able to jump on, and lots of pictures on social media of all of our staff wearing red for such a great cause. And I will turn it over, before I do, I'll just mention one thing, the board, you do have Blue Ribbon bracelets floating around somewhere from PAB, and so I couldn't get my hands on them to bring them to you, but in heart, you have your blue bracelets, and I will find those for you. And the second, I just wanted to mention that Mr. Jim Pfeifer is not here tonight, and so we have a brand-new, probably the newest member of the Penfield Central School District, which is Danielle Pfeifer, gave birth to a healthy baby boy, and we're very excited because it helps with enrollment numbers, and we're also happy with the Pfeifer. So he's out tonight, surely awake all night long, taking care of that little baby. So, I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansucci.
Thank you. I have two presentations tonight, one on what in the agenda is listed as the capital budget. That's the portion of our budget that supports buildings, buildings and grounds, the transportation department, and our debt service, the mortgage payments on our buildings. Also, want to give you an update on our, on the capital project, the progress on the capital project that we'll be proposing with this year's budget. I just want to remind everyone, as I always do, about our goals. The board annually adopts district goals, and we always begin every budget presentation with a review of those, and I think sometimes it's easy to lose track of how it connects to something like a discussion around transportation, around buildings and grounds, around debt service. But those are, this is the portion of the budget where we ensure that kids arrive to school safely and able to learn, and we provide them with an environment that's conducive to learning, that's safe, that's clean, that's warm, and that allows the great things we do to go on. So, we all contribute this part of the budget no less than any other. We've gone through a number of presentations as we've gone along. We began in November 3rd, we've talked, we've had a number of meetings, this is an ongoing part of a process, and tonight, we're looking at the 15% of the budget that's composed of those items. Our next meeting on the 1st of March, we get a little extra week break because of the calendar in February, but on March 1st, we'll be looking at the largest piece of our budget. The instructional portion composes nearly a third of the budget. BOSI's programs, benefits for all of our programs in April, and then we'll be adopting at the 2nd April meeting. As you can see, in terms of pie slice, this is a significant part of our budget, but certainly not the largest. The instructional portions, both special areas and the general education portion of the budget, much larger. And it's up 6.3%. I'll explain why. Particularly, there's one change in the budget, a transfer to reserve that's comprising most of that increase. Without that transfer, it's about a 2.5% increase. Overall, a $14 million budget, $800,000. This is what that looks like, and this is an easy way, I think, for us to analyze this budget and also to understand what that, what's driving that increase. So you can see buildings and grounds is essentially flat, student transportation has a slight increase, replacement of buses is increasing. That increases every year per our plan. So as you know, we eliminated purchase of the bus, purchase of buses from the general fund some years ago, and we're gradually building it back in year over year over year as we deplete our reserve for purchase of buses. So that plan continues, and you see that little bump in replacement of buses. Project funding, we'll talk about in some more detail, but that's transfers to the capital fund for repair, replacement, renovation projects during the year, debt service up slightly, and a new transfer to reserves included in this budget. In terms of significant changes, you have lots of detail in your budget package and counts and some overall information, but I wanted to point out the, what I would consider the more significant changes. We have, we are recommending the increase of a bus mechanic. We currently have three bus mechanics and a head bus mechanic. This addition would bring us to four mechanics and the head. We did some analysis, and right now we have the highest bus to mechanic ratio in the county absent BOSI's. So all other school districts are lower than us, and we're retaining additional buses, so that's only going to grow. As I mentioned, in the, in the... fund some years ago, and we're gradually building it back in year over year over year as we deplete our reserve for purchase of buses. So that plan continues, and you see that little bump in replacement of buses. Project funding, we'll talk about in some more detail, but that's transfers to the capital fund for repair, replacement, renovation projects during the year. Debt service up slightly, and a new transfer to reserves included in this budget. In terms of significant changes, you have lots of detail in your budget package and counts and some overall information, but I, I wanted to point out the, what I'd consider the more significant changes. We have, we are recommending the increase of a bus mechanic. We currently have three bus mechanics and a head bus mechanic. This addition would bring us to, to four mechanics and, and the head. We did some analysis, and right now we have the highest bus to mechanic ratio in the county absent BOSI's. So all other school districts are, are lower than us, and we're retaining additional buses, so that's only going to grow. As I mentioned, in the, in the, in your, in the discussion item in your budget packages, we also have sort of a relatively inefficient bus garage we need to work through, so, which also has an impact on our ability to maintain those buses. So we think it's responsible and appropriate at this time to add that mechanic. It's recommended in this budget. And we're also budgeting for three additional route drivers. We're retaining, we retained in the last trade-in cycle, three minibus that we would have normally traded in. And in our next cycle, the buses that'll arrive in this upcoming July will retain two larger buses. They'll get built into our bus replacement cycle. They're, they're at about 100,000 miles at this point, but we'll build them into the cycle, we'll continue to use them, we'll manage their use. And what that does is allows us to, to grow the fleet in a, in a relatively easy way to accommodate growth in the district. So we will be using the minibus primarily. They, they get an awful lot of use for special education students. In particular, we'll be assigning one to a full-time run at Lower Sea Bird. BOSI's is also struggling, and, and we'd ask them to take over that run for us. Last year, with some more equipment, we'll be able to take it back, so we plan on that. We need to plan on the Windsor Ridge development. It's going forward, so we need some equipment and some, and an additional driver for that. And we're allocating one driver. We're relatively certain we'll be filling those. The other driver slot, we will budget and hold depending on, on what happens with additional development. So sort of an additional unassigned route driver. But those are included in your, in your bus, in your, in your, in your package. No changes in buildings and grounds are recommended, so those essentially compose the, the personnel changes in that, in that budget package. There's also a component of multi-year planning built into this. This is a part of the budget where you really see that. We try and do it obviously throughout the budget, but here, because it involves capital, the dollars, and the timeframes are, the dollars are, are bigger, the timeframes are longer, and so you see it more. So we're continuing our plan for replacement of buses. I mentioned that earlier. The, the general fund portion of the budget's going to grow from 160 to 240 as we continue to add 80 every year. We're going to look at that this year. I mentioned in the, in the write-up that we want to take a little bit more time and, and analyze that as we continue through this budget cycle. We're not proposing any changes now, but obviously with the additional buses, the changes in what's going on in state aid in the state, it's probably time to take a look at that overall plan and make sure it still makes sense. So nothing changed for now, we're going to continue it. But we do want to recommend that we take a look at it, and we'll be doing so and reporting back. We're also including 475 to fund maintenance or repair items throughout the district on an ongoing basis. So these would be smaller capital projects on an ongoing basis. We included 475. Last year, you'll recall, was used to fund budget shortfall in the, in the gymnasium project. We want to continue that funding. The transfer to capital will allow us to do that and to, and to keep up on an ongoing basis. And we also included a $500,000 plan transferred to capital reserve. As you know, we have a capital reserve in place that's not yet fully funded, and will be recommend, and will be, and we have, and I've talked about our three-phase plan for addressing capital needs in the district. So this year's budget, agenda item, addition of, of some classroom space at the elementary schools, and then that third bigger piece, depending on what happens in the community and with our building condition survey. So we know there'll be potential, there will be a, a third need. Just how that gets structured, we need to, we need, time will help us clarify. We're planning towards that, and we want a stable, steady, and budgeted piece of funding that will assist in, in doing that. That's, this was also recommended, if you'll remember, in our controllers audit, they suggested that we should be budgeting transfers, so we want to, to recognize and include that as well. This is what that looks like, that, this is the same budget, but just split up a little bit differently so that you can see relatively for that 11 million, $14 million, what the components look like. So salaries here for, for mechanics, for bus mechanics, for drivers, for cleaners, custodians. We're people business, and this is no different. So salaries compose the majority of the budget. You see the smaller amounts for equipment, for replacement of budget, for utilities, contractual items. The next largest piece, of course, is our debt service. We've, we have a relatively low bonded, relatively low amount of bonded debt compared to our peers, but we do have some, approximately $4 million per year. And that's budgeted here as well, composes the second largest portion of this. You see the transfer to capital, and finally, that, that one little lonely bar off to the furthest right-hand side of the slide is the recommended transfer to reserves. We'll be continuing, as I, I just want to foreshadow a little bit. The next meeting in March will be the, the general education budget. As I mentioned, that's about a third of the budget, and you can see that differently graphically here. We're filling in our bars, so board, the administrative portion of the budget was down slightly, as you recall. Student support was about flat. This budget has the slight increase. We'll need to work through student programs, BOSI's, and benefits, health, retirement, and social security before we're done, but that's coming up quickly. I'm sorry, did I miss something?
Isn't the meeting the first, not the fifth?
What'd I say? I said the first. It is the first.
Okay, the first thing, combined with the 3/5 meeting?
The work session.
Work session?
The March 5th work session.
The, we made a move to, it's going to be before the board meeting on the.
That's right. We moved it. I apologize. Yes, you're correct. I apologize, we moved it, and I forgot that on this slide. You're absolutely right. I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Good, looking for another meeting. Right. Find my book so I could write it down.
Yeah, no, I apologize. And so this, this slide then also run, but that's right. So BOSI's proposed budget review on the 5th, we need to review and adopt on that 2nd April meeting because May 3rd is our public hearing, the last formal presentation of the budget, and then of course, if everyone will come out and vote, we would appreciate that on May 17th at the high school from 6 to 9. I went through this fairly quickly, but I know the board, the board does have much more detailed presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Board members, any questions? We did have a lot of information in our packet. I just had one mark on, you know, when it comes to bus drivers. On the way over, I heard an ad from BOSI's, you know, looking for bus drivers. I think everyone is. Are we still competitive?
We continue to, we, if you know of someone, we'd be interested in talking to them. That's a county, a statewide problem, I should say, and, and a bit of a mystery to me. I mean, it is a very particular skill set. It's a very responsible job, obviously. The standards that the state puts on you to, to hold a bus driving license are high, and then the work is, you know, you, there's work in the morning, and there's work in the afternoon, and, and there's not a lot in the middle. So it's, it makes those, those positions challenging to fill, and, and we're all living with that, I think. We're doing okay, but as, but we, BOSI's is struggling, as, as you know, they've, they've declined to add routes. They, you know, they've always been sort of, we could always go to them if we had a student that wouldn't fit our routes and ask them, and they would pick those students up. They've told us, we can't do it. We don't call. So we're all, we're all struggling with that same fact that we're okay, but we're certainly interested in talking to folks who might be interested in that job.
So this is a good commercial for that. If anyone's interested, contact Barb.
Go online.
Go online, go online, and then, you know, fill it out and join us. So thank you.
Thank you. I also wanted to spend a little bit of time just updating the board on the final scope of our, of our 2016 capital project. Just to remind the board, although I know you know, that project includes asbestos abatement at the high school in Bay Trail. We're moving and repairing the ropes course, creating a baseball field at Bay Trail, and renovating some elementary playgrounds. I have two slides here, two sample slides of some work that's been going on in the background, and I, Mr. McNiff is here tonight. I'd like to ask him to update you. This is a site plan of Cobble's, of a, of a proposed design for the Cobble's playground, and this is what that looks like in 3D. So Mr. McNiff has been touring the elementary school staff, conversations with the PTAs because we're interested in partnering with, with them and with the principals as we work through the final designs, because what choices get made obviously depends, will impact the final design, space needs to be accommodated, the budget and so on. So we want to make sure that those bases have been touched before we, we go much further. Right now, the budget, the total project financing, including all those items, not just playgrounds, is about $3.2 million. That's eligible for state aid over 15 years at, including interest, an assumed interest on, on the project at 73.9%. So our projection for state aid ability of that project is that we'd receive about $180,000 per year for 15 years of state aid back. So over the course of the life of the, of the financing, we would get about $2.7 million back in state aid on the $3.2 million. February 4th was an important date, I think, in, in our lives of this project, as we, as we met for the first time with the PTAs and the HSAs, along with the Parketex, the particular architectural firm who does design of the, of the playground systems. Mr. McNiff led those conversations. I know the board was particularly interested in that and actually led in terms of, of including some work on the, on the playgrounds in this project. So I just wanted Mr. McNiff to come and sort of give you an update on how that went and, and what's being considered. So I'll turn it to you.
Great, thank you, Mark. I appreciate it. First off, I want to say I've worked on many multiple, multimillion dollar projects in the last 18 years of my career, and never have I seen this kind of enthusiasm for a playground project. I have seen, the kids are even already into it. It's amazing how well, how quickly it spreads out throughout the district for something of this nature, but that's a good thing. That's a good thing when you get that kind of attention for something that means it needs to be addressed. So it's a good thing we're doing this together. And I want to talk about that a little bit more detail, a little bit as far as that togetherness. So each of the principals, before we involve some of the PTA groups, we went through separately prior to the February 4th meeting, is kind of talk about, let's look at your conditions here a little bit with Parketex. I asked Parketex to go through the conceptual design level about looking at the pieces that are still good shape. Let's not get rid of the good stuff, but let's make sure we look at what can be saved, what can be used or utilized with a new reconfiguration of a conceptual design of our playgrounds. As you know, each of our sites are completely different. We have playground spread, excuse me, spread out differently at Cobble's than they are at Harris Hill. So we wanted to take a look at a holistic view of the entire district so that we can kind of set up each of the elementary schools to be at least on a simple baseline idea of having similar components at each site, so that there is a little bit of levelness between each of those facilities. So Parketex came through some great conceptual concept ideas for a starting point to have the conversation with the principals and bring in a representative from the PTA, HSA to go through what this might look like. So Parketex did that. We, we sat down, went through in one day, went to each building and went through the design, the conceptual ideas, and, and it's, it's difficult. We didn't want to go through a, a complete catalog of all the ultimate, you know, all the options that are available, but we picked out something that would be universal, that had all of the components that are modern design, but also includes the elements that everyone's looking for. So the, as an example, one of the pieces that will be replaced over at Cobble's was this conceptual idea. This is, like I said, this may, this is an idea that we've put together for a concept for Cobble's. As we look at other, some of the other schools such as Scribner or Harris Hill, we, they took a look at what do they already have that will be usable and modify, change the concept of what that primary playground will be. So you're going to see variations as we kind of develop the design a little bit as we go, after, after we go through the approval of the project, is we're going to refine a little bit of that to make sure that we include all those motor skills and things that each of the buildings want to have. So we did get great feedback. Everyone loved the concept, loved the conceptual plan. The one thing I did want to point out, when we looked at Scribner, we did take a look at, you know, what potential growth could happen with Scribner with regards to its current playground location. We're not sure how that will, how that will mesh together, but we wanted to make provision. So we're planning, if there is an event, anything, any additional space that gets added on to Scribner, that we're working that into the concept so that we're not putting in work that would potentially have to be moved, which is a key element to, to what we want to do here, too. And then the, the last piece that more, you know, really was an interest of the PTAs over the course of the last couple of years, is they've, they've expressed a lot of interest in wanting to buy playground components and pieces, as a lot of you already know. So what we did, working with Parketex before we had the meeting, I said, let's, let's put, let's put together some levels of donations, meaning anything from $750 to a large, much larger piece of equipment. There's a lot of different options to choose from, so that they could get an idea of potentially where they might want to focus on their fundraising pieces, so that we could develop the space that could potentially take up and put that item within the, the new configuration of the playground area. So we, we'd got some initial good feedback right, at some of the buildings, right at the meeting, but we asked them to, you know, do a little homework, talk with your group at your next meeting, and see what you might want to think of in the next three years, the next five years, or what have you, so that we can plan the area. So in the time that you do have funding, we can absorb and put one of those pieces of elements on the site because it's already prepared for that. And we kind of focused on separate elements than the main structures, so that they're more focused on, that's, that's what we bought for the playgrounds, to enhance what we currently have. A lot of great options. I am amazed by the amount of new equipment that is available for playgrounds. They come up with new stuff every year, and it's, it's a little overwhelming, but thankfully, with, with the help from Parketex, they've helped walk us through that. And the last thing I did want to mention with the playgrounds is all the components that are available off of state contracts and, and also can be negotiated down off of state contract, too. So as we get closer, just to give you know that, you know, that it's, it's some competition out there when it comes to funding, so it's easy to go right off state contract to work our numbers on that. So any questions?
Board members, any questions? Mark?
Yeah, actually, the, the last thing you mentioned, so Parketex is really designing it, but from the, whoever we, we'll bid out separately to build it, and that's will be a competitive bid.
Well, we'll do two separate things, I expect, that we're going to do. The site, if there's any site modifications, because one thing that's pretty interesting that we're going to be including with here is some ADA provisions, so handicap access. A lot of that civil aspect of grading and putting in those kind of elements will be civil design, which will be bid out for a site contractor to do. As far as purchasing and installing the actual equipment, we can purchase that right off state contract and do direct POs without having to do a bid. We haven't gone through that full process, if that's truly what we're going to do, but it is an option for us. So it's something we haven't, we haven't talked through, but I expect we may want to go that direction.
Except for what Parketex provides.
Correct, absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
Any other questions for Alan? If not, I'll just remind everybody about the rest of the schedule. So February 9th, tonight, we're, we're essentially finalizing scope and budget. March 1st, we, at the next board meeting, we'll need to make a seeker determination. So this is a capital project. We need to decide, the board needs to make a determination as to whether there's environmental impact. You'll lean on your attorney to have that conversation. We've already provided them with the information around the budget. I'll have for you a letter from them indicating what the appropriate level of action would be for action at the March 1st meeting. And March 23rd, we'll adopt the resolution setting the vote, not just for this project, this is part of it, but also we need to adopt the, the resolution setting the, the vote dates for our general fund budget, for election of board members and so on, because we need to make our advertising deadlines. There's requirements for numbers and months and, and public notice, so March 23rd's the deadline for that. Just in terms of process. for that. Just in terms of process, it's, we will be funding this with fund balance, so there'll be no additional tax impact, and it will be eligible for state aid. Does anybody have any questions?
Any other questions, board members? Okay, and I, I think that's great, the whole playground thing, and I know we generated some ideas here at the board about that, and, you know, something that our constituents can get their hands on, that's kind of real rather than five years down the road. So thank you for working all that through.
Thank you.
That wraps up superintendent reports.
Okay, board members, we are on page three.
Can I, I'm so sorry, and I, I don't want to do this, but I mentioned some a little bit earlier. So I have Mary Saluzzo here, and, and I'm putting her on the spot because I think she has your bracelets for Blue Ribbon Week.
Oh.
So, and if you trust me, I can pay you tomorrow.
Barb took care of it.
Barb took care of it, okay. That's a lot better than you paying sometime, so.
Thank you.
So Mary, thank you for the whole project, and we talked about it earlier, about how one of our, Mark was there and said, they were all great. He wouldn't pick one. We're going to pin them down later off camera to see, but thank you for doing it. I'm sorry I couldn't be there for the judging, but hopefully next year and, and for everything that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was, it was actually a good story, because we were at PAB, Barb and I, last month, and Barb said, oh, I'll take, I'll take bracelets for all the board members. And so then I had to beat Barb, and I was like, I'll take 10 for district office. So they got delivered at district office, and no one knew where they came from until I, like, walked into this, like, big discussion on where this, this pile of bracelets came from. So I passed them out of district office, and so thank you, Barb, for, for getting them for the board members as well.
My pleasure.
It's a great, great cause.
And Blue Ribbon Week is just tremendous.
So I'll see you all at Menchie's, because get a dollar off.
Dollar off at Menchie's.
Really? Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, wow, great. Okay.
I don't know if Dunkin' Donuts is on there.
That's okay.
It's Starbucks.
Starbucks, okay.
Starbucks, Menchie's, Mark's Pizzeria, and Don's Original. So we're all, I'll give a discount if you wear your bracelet.
Oh.
Nice.
All right. Thank you very much, and it's a great week, as we all know. So we'll watch all the social media, and it's been pouring through today, I know, and with all the hats, so. Okay, we're on page three of our agenda, and we're under financial items. Our single audit report. Copies of the single audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2015 have been provided to the Board of Education members by Raymond Wager, CPA, for our review. Those persons responsible for areas covered by the audit have also received the report. It's positive and unqualified, as in prior years, there have been no material instances of non-compliance or questioned cost. This report has been reviewed and accepted by the Audit Committee at their February 4th, 2016 meeting. Assistant Superintendent for Business, Dr. Mark Sansucci, is present to answer any questions by, that the board may have. And we will have a motion in a minute if we do have any questions. And I just wanted to comment, again, for our public, and I think the board knows, a single audit is done because we receive federal funds. So any organization generally not-for-profits or social services or schools, if you get federal funds, they require what they call a single audit, which is about their money, and they want to know where their money is, as well as we want to know where all our money is. So Catherine and I are on the Audit Committee, and we went through that last week, and we all received reports. So if I could have a, a motion in a second that the Board of Education accept the single audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2015?
So.
Any questions on the single audit? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Our extra classroom activity funds financial report. This annual independent audit of the extra classroom activity funds prepared for the Board of Education, once again by Raymond Wager, CPA, has been reviewed and accepted by the Audit Committee at our February 4th meeting as well, and has been provided to the board for review. This audit contains statements for the year ending June 30th, 2015, and a corrective action report for all concerns noted in the audit accompanies the report. Assistant Superintendent for Business, Dr. Mark Sansucci, is here to answer any questions. And again, as an explanation, these are all, as it says, extra classroom activities, all of our clubs in which we have treasurers and faculty advisors, and it's typical that any school district will have an audit done in regard to this. And I think it's usual, as we heard at the Audit Committee, there's always some tweaking that has to be done because we're dealing with students and volunteers, and we have about 60 some odd clubs.
Correct.
So there's a lot there, so it's, it's a great audit to do, but it's also a learning experience. And I know Mark's office continuously has to go out every year and kind of re-educate those who aren't familiar with budgets and receipts and things of that nature. So it's a good learning experience for the students, but it's also good that we check it out and have it audited. Could I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education accept the extra classroom activities financial report for the year ending June 30th, 2015?
Some more. Second.
Any questions? Carol?
Yes. Well, we do ask every year if we are training our treasurers and everything, and I trust and I know that you do this, so I think that is great. But it seems that some of the errors that are noted by the auditors keep on coming again every single year, and it's always this reconciliation of tickets. And so is there something we could do? Like, we, I know we train our student treasurers. Do we train our club advisors?
We do. We offer, we offer training annually for both the club advisors and the treasurers. They change, and that's part of the, sort of the ongoing challenge of this. There's a central treasurer at each building, a school employee who helps manage the money, and, and they're familiar with the process as well. So we, this is an area that just requires work, and we keep after it. And as you know, I always say I welcome any audit comment. I just hope they never repeat. I, I always, I have to despair of that a little bit with extra classroom, but I, I think it's, I would also, I, just to, to put in context, at the Audit Committee meeting, Mr. Wager did say that this is, and this is a credit to the students and the advisors, actually, because that's where this work's done, that it, this is one of the cleanest extra classroom audits he does. That surprises me, because, you know, I'd like to have no comments, and we've never quite made that. We do have three this year. They're ticket reconciliations. The requirement there, of course, is that there be pre-numbered tickets issued for any event, and that there be, and that the cash received tie out to those tickets. The, the idea behind that is that there's cash involved, and there's really no way absent that to know how many people went in and how much cash was paid and what got deposited. So it's that control that they're looking for. We'll continue to work on it.
Okay, thank you. It's like the, the one thing that he always finds every year, and I mean, it's like, oh, okay, yeah, we know about that one.
We know, and we're working on it.
So I'm always thinking, like, what can we do so that we stop having this problem?
I would say that in, with regard to that, there were comments last year and comments this year. I, I think we're on track to have it filled out. I'm loath to promise you, you won't see it next year, but, but I, one of the things we always struggle a little bit with this particular audit is just a matter of timing. So if you think about when you're having this, if he found, we're presenting it in February, but it's for last year. So he audited last year's activity. So if there was a problem last year, chances are it's still going on this year, and he's going to find it when he comes in next year. So even if we're perfect from February on, you tend to see extra classroom comments repeat twice, which makes me tear my hair out. But there's, but, but that's a challenge. It's, and there's so many clubs involved that, you know, when we get it corrected in one, it sometimes pops up in another. That's never done a fundraiser before and, and didn't have to do it. So we keep working on it.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate knowing that this is the cleanest one that he does.
Well, I've.
So I'll hold on to that thought.
Thank you.
Catherine, do you have anything to add on behalf of the Audit Committee in regard to that, or beyond what Mark said?
No.
Okay. I always like to check in with the committee members and.
No, I appreciate that, but it's covered.
And I, I know also, Mr. Wager, you know, we have faculty assigned to each of these, and that does change, and, you know, some of our faculty are really good at some things, and they're learning in other things, just like any organization. So that's a, a learning curve as well. Okay, on the question and the motion, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Policy review. We have a second reading and approval of policy 8480 in summer school, and this is a policy that we're deleting, and we previously mentioned this. Is there anything to add from the Policy Committee in regard to that? Easy to delete, right? And, okay, if we could have a motion a second that policy 8480 be deleted as presented at our January 26, 2016 meeting and above?
Some move.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Thank you. We also had a presentation on January 26 in regard to a new high school textbook and approval. It's an art history book, and we had, for grade level 10 through 12, Art History, 5th Edition, and do we have anyone come and look at the book, or as it was available?
It wasn't mentioned to me.
Okay.
I would, I would just share that the, the, I think all of district office took a look at it because of what we talked about in the last couple of board meetings, and it's a beautiful book with just those color illustrations of just such amazing artwork. So I think it, it probably got looked at a lot more than some of the other ones, but by district office staff who kept peeking in it.
I think a couple people could come up.
Yeah. And it, as it passed around here, it was very popular, too. It's a great book, so. Okay, if I could have a motion a second that the Board of Education approved the above-mentioned textbook as it was presented, January 26, 2016?
Some move.
Questions? All those in favor? Thank you. Special education committee slash subcommittee appointments. We do this annually in regard to our special education committee and subcommittee appointments, and if I could have a motion a second that the individuals on the attached 5-dash-E in your packet be appointed to the District Committee on Special Education, District Preschool Committee on Special Education, and Subcommittee for Special Education at Penfield High School, Bay Trail, Cobbles, Harris Hill, Indian Landing, and Scribner Road, in accordance with the Commissioner's Regulations, Part 200-3, for the 2015-16 school year as recommended.
Some more. Second.
Any questions? It was all in your packet. All those in favor? Thank you. Under President's remarks, I did want to add in there, many of us were at the Monroe County School Board's Legislative Breakfast last Saturday morning. Did anyone want to comment on the breakfast? And, and this is where we meet with our legislators. We had six legislators show up and their staff and about 120 school board members, which is the biggest number ever. Mark, would you like to say something?
I'll just say that it was, you know, it was a really good opportunity for some good one-on-one conversation. You know, we did ask a lot of very indirect questions about things that are relevant, relevant to us, and really what we saw was they understand our issues, and, and the parts they don't understand, they're receptive to. We presented a lot of information. We had handouts with data for them to take back, very easy-to-use data, and they were all very interested in it. And I think they really are going to be our advocates, especially this year with things like the G, the gap elimination and some of the others, like the foundation funding.
Anyone else? Catherine?
I got a sense this year that the legislators were a little more, not, I don't want to imply that they're unfriendly people, but they seemed more receptive, like you're saying, and more supportive of education this year than I've seen since I've been on the board. This is my fourth year on the board. So it was, I thought it was, that was a positive aspect of it. And then some explanations were floating around at my table about why we're kind of in the predicament we're in, specifically with the minimum wage situation and how manufacturing has gone away in our community, all, all across America, really. And that is, has created the gap in, you know, how people can go out and earn a living. So there was, I appreciated that. It felt like more of a conversation rather than adversarial, you know, pushing for, you know, we have this need, we have this, we have that. It just seemed like there was more cooperation and more approachability. I thought it was a very, very good way to spend a Saturday morning with our legislators. It was, it was good.
Great. And I would just add, you know, we have new leaders, a new leader in the Assembly, a new leader in the Senate due to so unfortunate criminal actions for the previous people in those positions, but I sensed that was a good thing.
Yeah.
I think there's a little more movement from the main body upward to the leadership rather than down, and that's great for democracy, so that was positive, too. Barb?
Having gone to many, many of these, it was nice to see that shift of being collaborative with our legislators versus them being the messengers that don't ask for anything because it's not coming. It was just, that was just a very refreshing piece to be part of and, as well as to get the feeling from them how much they value education, because that, I think, was always, was not always lacking, but it was not always a part of the legislators who were part of this breakfast.
All right. Mark?
They might feel unshackled right now.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Right. Unshackle New York.
Very well, upstate.
Launch, launch New York, unshackle upstate, and further the education of our, over 100,000 students in Monroe County. So that's a positive thing.
And I, just one last thing. I thought Sherri did an amazing presentation right at the beginning. It was very, very good and very representative of education.
Okay, great. So we will, that will continue with legislative trip to Albany at the end of this month, and we'll have representatives from the board going on that to further talk about, in their office and visit with the legislators of everything that's important to the kids of our district. BOSI's Board Candidates. Each of the component boards in the BOSI's district has representative, a representative on the BOSI's Board, and the following BOSI's Board members' terms end as of June 30th, 2016. D. Brian Buttram, resident of the Rush Henrietta Central School District, Lafayette Eaton, resident of the East Rochester Union Free School District, and Linda Monte, resident of the Pittsford Central School District. BOSI's Board members are elected by their component member boards, which is us, and voted on the same day designated for the vote on the tentative administrative budget for BOSI's. This year, the BOSI's administrative budget vote is April 19th, 2016, and will occur at our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board, so we'll stay tuned for that. We don't have any unfinished business. Is there any new business that anyone wants to bring forward for the Board? Okay. If that's the case, I'll look for a motion to adjourn at 8:14 PM.
Some move.
All those in favor? Thank you.